This is the same thing we all have.
Was there a question?
They've got one. Guarantee you put on your off.
This one you said.
To have five years on.
This one you got, you had to meet up with Stephen Woolens. He's from Dallas. His wife used to be in Dallas. Steve Woolens? That's one of the deals you see about some kind of class action.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's Antonio Gish.
Yeah, but I saw that. He used to be a state representative of Dallas. And his wife, who was Blair Dallas.
Did you know it?
I never met him.
Because I heard.
One, except one, that did only do, actually, bolted on three lines. So that's why I wanted to ask. Much as anybody could.
More I think I'll stack out something else.
Rat call me to tell me about this. I mean, I just.
Call to order, special meeting here at the city council, Ranses Pass, here at City Hall, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, October 26, 7:00 p.m. Will please rise for the invocation.
Lord, we'd like to give you thanks for this beautiful day, the past week that has come by. We ask you to please guide us as a council to come to our better judgment when we come for any kind of dealings for the behalf of the city. We ask you, Lord, to watch over and please bless Mr. Bill Haynes and his family right now in their time of need. We ask you to bless also those others that aren't feeling so well right now and their families that are trying to make them feel better. We ask you with all the strength and the love in your hands, watch over us here in Ranses. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us all the way down to item five, our citizen comments. You have three minutes to state your business. Please state your full name and full address, and the floor is now open for citizen comments.
My name is Daniel Jimenez, 140 North Hollywood Street, in Ranses Pass. I'm not 100% sure that you're going to discuss this at this meeting, but I understand that you're going to ask, be asked, to place a time limit on non-conforming use as regards to the zoning ordinance. And I don't believe that that is required, that it had to put time limits, will actually complicate an already complicated situation. The only thing that the city needs in order to enforce the building code and deal with non-conforming, non-conforming status regarding to the zoning ordinance is in Article 5 of substandard buildings, Section 572, minimum standard for buildings. Well, actually, it's Section 573, procedure for eliminating substandard conditions. Letter B, issuance of permits, substandard buildings, the following provisions set forth, conditions, and regulations to govern issuance, issuance of permits, or repairs to existing buildings. Number two, if the cost of any alteration or repair to make a building conform to the minimum requirements of this code as determined by the city inspector is in excess of 50% of the physical value as of the moment before such repairs or alterations are proposed or commenced to an existing building, such building shall be made to conform to all of the requirements of the building code applicable to new buildings and including those pertinent zoning requirements. That is when a person loses their zoning rights. I have been told that I had lost, my situation has been resolved as far as I know, but I was told that I could not use a mobile home that I've been using in the city for over 15 years because I had, did not have the water and electrical, and therefore it was classified substandard. There is nothing that classifies structures as substandard in the substandard building code because it doesn't have its utilities on. There's nothing in the International Property Maintenance Code that requires a building to be substandard because it doesn't have utilities or because it's vacant. The definition is abandoned. To put a time limit of a year or any time limit as far as that goes, I do not believe complies with your own ordinance. The city doesn't need time. You can enforce this code today immediately. There are buildings in the city that do not comply to the minimum standard of this code. There are no, there are no time limits required. So the two, to put a time limit, in my opinion, is just going to complicate the issue, especially when, when the determination, as far as my property was concerned, was based off of the fact that I did not have my utilities on. They made other determinations, but they didn't have any bearing as far as the use.
Right.
And they turned around and said that I had abandoned property because I didn't have the water and the utilities on, which the code does not define abandonment because you don't have your utility law. So if that's what's being proposed, then I'm opposed to that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
There is a proposal within the consent agenda that is clarifying the building standard portion of it, 50% rule. That is the for you. There is no item before you that has the non-conforming use, although that is a discussion we are having as a staff and we'll bring that to the council at some point.
Later, Dick.
Mr. Jimenez is exactly right. The 50% rule is usually what is taken into account when buildings are substandard.
When buildings are substandard and we have, for example, a store come through. The other issue is when we take uses out of the zoning ordinance, like we did mobile homes out of the single-family residence, there's never a way to get those out. And so in the normal course of events, standards across the country is a year to 24 months or so of a use that has not been had, i.e. the use being determined by utilities. He's absolutely right. Right now, we do not have a time limit, the very first time limit for non-conforming you guys just approved in the harbor. In that regard, I believe it's six months, six months in the harbor, when those uses are gone, the non-conforming use goes away and it loses its grandfather's house. What's before you on consent is only clarification of the 50% rule on the tax value.
Thank you, Sylvia. Yes, sir.
City Council. My name is Stephen 617 North Houston. I have been very patient. I have been off for a while, maybe we should have not been up here. But I'm going back to this mowing thing again. The city manager has told us in the past that she hired a citizen of Ranses Pass to go around mow these lots. I haven't seen any mowed. That must be broke because probably he's mowing it. And then I missed one of the council meetings and I read in the minutes that there was a new program that she was going to set up to block off different sections of the path of Ranses Pass for beautification. I haven't seen anything happen with that. That lot, catty corner across from my house on the corner, is outrageous. I mean, it's weed and stuff are tugging on it. It's grown skunks, opossums, snakes. It needs to be mowed, bottom line. How long are we going to be putting up this stuff to get this stuff mowed? It don't take six months to a year.
What's that address again, Mr. Wolf?
It's catty corner across from 617 North Houston, right on the corner of Prior and Houston. We need to get it mowed, sir. If somebody tells me what we've got to do, I'll help out. Well, we've got to get that mowed.
That's somebody's personal property, right?
My dogs are sprayed twice with skunks and everything else coming from over there. And there's opossums constantly in the street, painting over my fence and everything else over there. And it's a health issue, you know?
Right.
And plus, it's very dangerous. I don't know what kind of beautification the city manager is doing, but it ain't working. And it's up to y'all to see what we can do to get this thing fixed.
I should appreciate any help y'all can give me. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Mayor, council, if I could, we had the discussion of any lots that are not improved, if they're on an improved street, do we mow them? Do we clear them? It's a lot clearing, basically. Those lots are all over the city, all over the city. To enforce one lot and not the other, that really is a discussion that we're not just bouncing around as a staff because we have a vacant lot throughout the town in between normal residential houses. And because we don't have an ordinance requiring lots to be cleared if they're on an improved street, then, you know, everywhere from 9th to 11th and all the way around, we have lots that, you know, are covered in trees and growth. So that's really a consideration for the council, not just as a health issue, but the burden it's supposed to place on those property owners.
I got a question, too. What about the ones that are bought on taxes and stuff?
Well, again, we don't have an ordinance saying, what we proposed about 18 months ago or so was if it was on an improved street, i.e. a paved street, that it had to be mowed the way the residents, whether it had a structure on it or not. But there are so many lots, that's what affects everything in the back, back here. There are so many lots that are like that. Happy to propose that to the council again if we think this is the time to do it. The lots that we go after typically have a structure as we go after the substandard portion of the lot. And we do have to fix a ticket, but it's difficult to give a ticket when there's an ordinance that says if it's a vacant lot, it must be cleared all the way down to nothing.
Right.
So that's a discussion, and if you'd like, we can bring that back at the next council meeting.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Mayor, city council, the problem I have with that is why wasn't this brought up six months ago when this was first brought up? It seems like every time I bring this up, city manager has another excuse. You know, first, we, you know, I tried to frame her, I tried to get a mowing jobs from her. She turned it down. She was a little over, said they only hired one person, that was going to be enough, that she had a big list of lots to be mowed and they were going to be mowing them. Nothing's been mowed that we, anybody that I know driving around the city hasn't ever been, you know, looked at and seen. And then that never happened. So then she started this beautification of the city with plotting these things out. That, nobody's seen anything happen over that. Now she's saying we need another ordinance for this or that, you know? And it's always one excuse after another. Let's stop the excuses and let's get the job done.
Okay, so what do you want to do, Steve?
I want to get that lot mowed.
Just your lot, though, across from your house?
No, it's not my lot. It is not my.
So why do just yours and not everybody else's that are next to them, like the lot behind my house?
We need to get a hold of them.
Like the one across the street from my house?
I understand. We need to get a hold of them.
I mean, I think we all got lots around our houses that should be taken care of or houses torn down, but...
But it doesn't take six months to a year to get these empty lots in the city mowed, sir.
But it does take taxpayer money.
Okay.
This budget for certain jobs.
But your lots belong to somebody.
Right.
And she said she had it in the budget to hire this guy, a citizen of Ranses Pass, to mow these lots. Well, if it's in the budget, then let's get them mowed.
I think the citizen that got it is mowing the ones that he applied for, like there's the Harvard Park, we had the ones for the medians, we had the ones by the bit of...
This was long before that, Mayor.
Talking about the mowing that we do have is where there's a structure involved.
And that's the one where we have the list of the houses and...
We did away with that program and we went to fix it to me. So code enforcement is giving citations to those houses. That's the mowing that he was talking about, that Mr. Warren applied and was not in work. Okay? It is mowing the lots and have a substandard structure on them.
Because she said one person, at that time, one person was enough to mow these other lots. Apparently, it wasn't enough to mow all these lots.
Takes more than one person, right?
Because they're still not getting mowed. It's just every time we have this conversation, city manager has one excuse after another, bandy, bandy excuse, you know? When is the city council and the mayor going to put up with it?
I think it's three minutes.
Way past three minutes.
All right. Well, you got your point, right? Is there anybody else that would like to say anything? You got a lot, too, Mr. Brun?
Yes, I do. And I've been keeping it mowed. My name is Donald Brun, 902 South Wright. What I would like to put before y'all is, I know you're planning on getting, trying to get a Harbor Master boat, a new boat, the boat that you have.
Yes, sir.
I know they might have named it the Barnacle.
Yeah.
But that boat is sound, the motor, the motor that was on it, it is a fast boat. You could probably fix it up for about a third of what a brand-new boat and motor trailer would cost. That man back there can tell you it'd be a lot cheaper to fix that one, paint it, put new seats on it, new light, whatever, than spend 25, 30,000 for a new one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brun. So has anybody looked into the fixing the old boat or the purpose? Chuck, or could you answer that?
The article from the ground up has a, the trailer is rotted away.
Right.
The shackles that support the springs are rusted away, the springs are absolutely shot and need replaced, the tires are bad, the fenders are bad, the winch on the trailer is bad, and the shackles that hold the buckboards that the boat rests on are completely broken through on the port side, the left side of the trailer. The boat itself, the wiring is highly suspect, it's just all hanging in a nightmare, none of the switches seem to work. The battery is dead, there's a galvanic reaction between the stainless steel top that was on it at some point in time where it's bolted to the aluminum, you have corrosion there. The hull itself would probably float. The engine, I don't know the condition of the engine, it's been reported to me that two, three months ago, somebody got it to run. The fuel in the two big fuel tanks is highly suspect.
It's been in there for a while, right?
By now. I have had, at the local, one of the local dealers pull bad gas out, replace gas lines, hose the engine up, redo the carburetors, and it costs what I'm familiar with.
Yes, sir.
The upgrade cost on it to put that boat back in service, my estimate is it's about twice what that boat was sold for if you put it on a corner of the same site.
Do you know what year it is?
It's 35 years old, Mayor.
35 years old?
Yes.
Okay. Just asking. Appreciate it, Mr. West.
My estimate of soundness value is somewhere between $1,000 to $1,000, maybe $1,300.
Does it have any life preservers on it? Just asking.
There's a few laying on the floor and they're faded out.
Yes, sir.
Looks like they've always been planted.
All right. Thank you, Mr. West. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything here at the citizen comments?
I received a notice for annexation out on the bypass.
What's your name, sir, and your address?
Paul Harrison, 2034 Highway 35, bypass.
Yes, sir.
And when would that take place?
December 7th and December 14th are hearing dates, annexation scheduled into the new year.
So the taxes on that property would be need to pay the following October?
Correct.
And what is the rate, the city tax rate?
.68.
.68?
.68 per $100 of value. So if you take your property value and multiply it by .0068, you'll get a good estimate.
And how long before y'all have to provide services other than the police protection?
We'll have a service plan that's presented on expectation of when it's filed, service delivered. So we'll be providing a complete service plan on the 7th and on the 14th. Typically, the statute is within five years.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Is there anybody else? If not, then I'll close our public hearings. This is going to bring us to item number six, the consent agenda. All the following items are consent agenda considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member so requests. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately, and we're looking at items 6A, B, and C.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All affairs say aye?
Aye.
This is going to bring us to item number seven, considering that the city manager item, Sylvia.
Mayor, asking to table item 7A, the wind for insurance. There's still some questions to be resolved.
I make a motion that we table agenda item 7A.
Second. All persons say aye?
Aye.
Item 7B is considering our going to awarding the bid for purchase of a cargo vessel. We did re-advertise clarifying some warranty information. We received was from Chris's Marine, the amount of $43,698. That would be funded by a note carried by Prosperity Bank that would cross the harbor funds approximately $90,000 a year.
All right. Is there a motion for approval for 7B?
I make a motion that we approve the bid for Chris's Marine for $43,698.
And they include the trailer, right, Chris?
Included. It's included.
Second. All affairs say aye?
Aye.
Is this going to be the part of the line? Try not to let it grow, or... Mayor, council, item 7C is an amendment to the UCM contract and the contract to succeed 12409. This is a contract that is doing the engineering review and technical writing for preparation for litigation against engineering and construction funds at Public Point Park and various projects across the city. If awarded, this item would be included in the damages the city would be...
Recue. Is there any questions from council on this item?
This is the one that we already approved, like, this was the firm, okay?
Yes.
That's such a long time ago.
Trust me, I wish I had one of these kind of positions today, especially when we go to council today.
Is there a motion? to be substandard because it doesn't have utilities or because it's vacant. The definition is abandoned. To put a time limit of a year or any time limit as far as that goes, I do not believe complies with your own ordinance. The city doesn't need time. You can enforce this code today, immediately. There are buildings in the city that do not comply to the minimum standard of this code. There are no time limits required. So to put a time limit, in my opinion, is just going to complicate the issue, especially when the determination, as far as my property was concerned, was based off of the fact that I did not have my utilities on. They made other determinations, but they didn't have any bearing as far as the use.
Right.
And they turned around and said that I had abandoned the property because I didn't have the water and the utilities on, which the code does not define abandonment because you don't have your utility on. So if that's what being proposed, then I'm opposed to that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
There is a proposal within the consent agenda that is clarifying the building standard portion of it, 50% rule. That is the for you. There is no item before you that has the non-conforming use, although that is a discussion we are having as a staff and we'll bring that to the council at some point.
Later, Dave.
Mr. Jimenez is exactly right. The 50% rule is usually what is taken into account when buildings are substandard. When buildings are substandard and we have, for example, a store come through. The other issue is when we take uses out of the zoning ordinance, like we did mobile homes out of the single-family residence, there's never a way to get those out. And so in the normal course of events, standards across the country is a year to 24 months or so of a use that has not been had, i.e. the use being determined by utilities. He's absolutely right. Right now, we do not have a time limit, the very first time limit for non-conforming. You guys just approved in the harbor. In that regard, I believe it's six months? Six months? In the harbor, when those uses are gone, the non-conforming use goes away and it loses its grandfather status. What's before you on consent is only clarification of the 50% rule on the tax value.
Thank you, Sylvia. Yes, sir.
City Council. My name is Stephen Warren, 617 North Houston, P. C. I have been very patient. I have been off a while, making wishes I've not been up here. But I'm going back to this mowing thing again. The city manager has told us in the past that she hired us since in Ranses Pass to go around mow these lots. I haven't seen any mowed. That must be broke, because I don't think he's mowing anything. And then I missed one of the council meetings and I read in the minutes that there was a new program that she was going to set up to block off different sections of the Ranses Pass for beautification. I haven't seen anything happen with that. That lot, catty corner across my house, on the corner, is outrageous. I mean, the weed and stuff are taller than I am. It's drawn skunks, possums, snakes. It needs to be mowed, bottom line. How long are we going to be putting up with this stuff to get this stuff mowed? It don't take six months to a year.
What's that address again, Mr. Warren?
It's catty corner across from 617 North Houston, right on the corner of Prior and Houston.
Prior and Houston.
We need to get it mowed, sir. If somebody tell me what we got to do, I'll help out. Well, we got to get that mowed.
That's somebody's personal property, right?
My dogs have sprayed twice with skunks and everything else coming from over there. And there's possums constantly in the street, painting over my fence and everything else over in there, and it's a health issue, you know?
Right.
And plus, it's very dangerous. And I don't know what kind of beautification the city manager is doing, but it ain't working. And it's up to y'all to see what we can do to get this thing fixed. And I should appreciate any help you ever can give me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
Mayor Hensler, if I could, we had a discussion of any lots that are not improved, if they're on an improved street, do we mow them? Do we clear them? It's a lot clearing, basically. Those lots are all over the city, all over the city. To enforce one lot and not the other, that really is a discussion that we're not just bouncing around as a staff because we have vacant lots throughout the town in between normal residential houses. And because we don't have an ordinance requiring lots to be cleared, if they're on an improved street, then, you know, everywhere from 9th to 11th and all the way around, we have lots that, you know, are covered in trees and growth. So that's really a consideration for the council, not just as a health issue, but the burden it's supposed to place on those property owners.
I got a question, too. What about the ones that are bought on taxes and stuff?
Well, again, we don't have an ordinance saying, what we proposed about 18 months ago or so was if it was on an improved street, i.e. a paved street, that it had to be mowed the way the residents, whether it had a structure on it or not. But there are so many lots, that's what affects everything in the back, back here. There are so many lots that are like that. Happy to propose that to the council again if we think this is the time to do it. The lots that we go after typically have a structure as we go after the substandard portion of the lot. And we do have to fix it, take it, but it's difficult to give a ticket when there's an ordinance that says if it's a vacant lot, it must be cleared all the way down to nothing.
Right.
So that's a discussion, and if you'd like, we can bring that back at the next council meeting.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Mayor, City Council, the problem I have with that is why wasn't this brought up six months ago when this was first brought up? It seems like every time I bring this up, city manager has another excuse. You know, first, we, you know, I tried to, a friend of mine tried to get a mowing jobs from her. She turned that down. She blew us out of our city. They only hired one person, and that was going to be enough, that she had a big list of lots to be mowed, and they were going to be mowing them. Nothing's been mowed that we, anybody that I know driving around the city has ever been, you know, looked at and seen. And then that ever happened. So then she started this beautification of the city with plotting these things out. That, nobody's seen anything happen over that. Now she's saying we need another ordinance for this or that, you know? It's always one excuse after another. Let's stop the excuses and let's get the job done.
Okay, so what do you want to do, Steve?
I want to get that lot mowed.
It's your lot, though, across from your house.
That's not my lot. It is not my.
So what I do, just yours, not everybody else's, that are next to them, like the lot behind my house?
We need to get all of them mowed.
Like the one across the street from my house?
I understand. We need to get them all mowed.
I mean, I think we all got lots around our houses that should be taken care of if our house is torn down, but...
But it doesn't take six months to a year to get these empty lots in the city mowed, sir.
But it does take taxpayer money.
Okay.
It's budgeted for certain jobs.
But these lots belong to somebody.
Right.
And she said she had it in the budget to hire this guy, a citizen of Ranses Pass, to mow these lots. Well, if it's in the budget, then let's get them mowed.
I think the citizen that got it is mowing the ones that he applied for, like there's the Harvard Park, we had the ones for the medians, we had the ones by the bit of it.
This was long before that, Mayor.
He's talking about the mowing that we do have is where there's a structure involved.
And that's the one where we have the list of the houses and...
We did away with that program and we went to fix it, take it. So code enforcement is giving citations to those houses. That's the mowing that he was talking about, that Mr. Warren applied and was not working. Okay? It is mowing the lots and have a substandard structure on them.
Because she said one person, at that time, one person was enough to mow these lots. Apparently...
Takes more than one person, right?
...was enough to mow all these lots.
Okay.
Because we're still not getting mowed. It's just every time we have this conversation, the city manager has one excuse after another, bandied, bandied excuse. You know, when is the city council and the mayor going to put up with it?
Mayor, I think it's three minutes.
Way past three minutes.
All right. Well, you got your point, right? Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything? You got a lot, too, Mr. Warren?
Yes, I do.
I saw the lot.
And I've been keeping it mowed. My name is Oliver Warren, 902 South Wright. What I would like to put before y'all is, I know you're planning on getting, trying to get a Harvard Master boat, a new boat, the boat that you have.
Yes, sir.
I know they might have named it the Barnacle.
Yeah.
But that boat is sound. The motor, the motor that was on it, it is a fast boat. You could probably fix it up for about a third of what a brand-new boat and motor trailer would cost. That man back there can tell you it'd be a lot cheaper to fix that one, paint it, put new seats on it, new light, whatever, than spend 25, 30,000 for a new one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. So has anybody looked into the fixing the old boat or the purpose? Did you answer that?
The Barnacle from the ground up has a, the trailer is rotted away.
Right.
The shackles that support the springs are rusted away. The springs are absolutely shot and need replaced. The tires are bad, the fenders are bad. The wind on the trailer is bad, and the shackles that hold the buckle forks that the boat rests on are completely broken through on the port side, the left side of the trailer. The boat itself, the wiring is highly suspect. It's just all hanging in a nightmare. None of the switches seem to work. The battery is dead. There's a galvanic reaction between the stainless steel top that was on it at some point in time, where it's bolted to the aluminum. You have corrosion there. The hull itself would probably float. The engine, I don't know the condition of the engine. It's been reported to me that two, three months ago, somebody got it to run. The fuel in the two big fuel tanks is highly suspect.
It's been in there for a while, right?
I'm sure it's sour by now. I have had, at the local, one of the local dealers pull bad gas out, replace gas lines, clean the engine up, redo the carburetors, and it costs that I'm familiar with.
Yes, sir.
The upgrade cost on it to put that boat back in service, my estimate is it's about twice what that boat will sell for if you put it on a 40% sale.
Do you know what year it is?
It's 35 years old, Mayor.
35 years old?
Yes.
Okay. Just asking. Appreciate it, Mr. Warren.
My estimate of salvage value is somewhere between $1,000, $1,400, maybe $1,300.
Does it have any life preservers on it? Just asking.
No, the life preservers, no. There's a few laying in the floor and they're faded out.
Yes, sir.
It looks like they've always been planted.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything here at the citizen comments?
I received an advice for annexation out on the Blackpass.
What's your name, sir, and your address?
Paul Harrison, 2034 Highway 35, Blackpass.
Yes, sir.
And when would that take place?
December 7th and December 14th are hearing dates, annexation scheduled into the new year.
So the taxes on that property would be need to pay the following October?
Correct.
And what is the rate, the city tax rate?
Point 6.8.
Point 6.8?
Point 6.8 per hundred dollars of valuation. So if you take your property value and multiply it by .0068, you'll get a good estimate.
And how long before y'all have to provide services other than the police protection?
We will have a service plan as presented on expectation of land plan service delivered. So we'll be providing a complete service plan on the 7th and on the 14th. Typically, the statute is within five years.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Is there anybody else? If not, then I'll close our public hearings. This is going to bring us to item number six, the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a councilor's sole request. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately, and we're looking at items 6, A, B, and C.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in first, say aye. Aye. This is going to bring us to item number seven, considering that the city manager items, Sylvia.
Mayor, asking to table item 7A, the wind farm insurance. There's still some questions to be resolved.
I make a motion that we table agenda item 7A.
Second. All in first, say aye. Aye.
Item 7B is considering our awarding the bid for purchase of a private vessel. We did re-advertise clarifying some warranty information. We received West Front Chris's Marine in the amount of $43,698. That would be funded by a note carried by Prosperity Bank that would cost the harbor funds approximately $90,000 a year.
So here, motion for approval for 7B?
I make a motion that we approve the bid for Chris's Marine for $43,698.
And that includes the trailer, right, Chris?
Included.
All right.
Included. Second.
All in first, say aye. Aye.
Is this going to be the important part? We'll try not to let it grow hard. Mayor, item 7C is an amendment to the DCM contract in the now-12409. This is a contract that is due in the engineering review of the technical writing for preparation for litigation against engineering and construction funds at Public Point Park and various projects across the city. If awarded, this item would be included in the damages, the city would be...
Recu. Is there any questions from council on this item?
This is the one that we already approved?
Yes.
This was the firm? Okay.
Yes.
That's such a long time ago.
Yeah.
Trust me, I wish I would have won the position today for two hours or a session with the local council today.
So here, motion for approval for item 7C?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the agenda item not to exceed $12,409.
I second.
All in first, say aye. Aye.
That will close out the conference.
This is bringing us to item 7D.
7B is in review of our beer license permit. It has come to our attention that several vendors do not have appropriate licenses and do not have the appropriate amount. So really, staff is just looking for direction on how you would like this to pursue all of the past due amounts, it's about $6,000 of dollars, and outstanding payments due. I will say that this is a staff error, absolutely a staff error in record keeping and reconciling what is due to the state, as well as internal processes on what is issued, if there's a permit, what gets backed off on by now-planning staff in the Health Division, and what actually makes its way to City Secretary. So a couple of different departments touching.
So how many departments dropped the ball?
All of them.
All of them?
Now, is this just for this year or was it an ongoing problem?
It's been an ongoing problem.
Okay.
Do we have, are we, can we legally require them to pay, Mr. Lawrence?
I would certainly think so.
Okay, I'm just asking about that. There's no limit as far as years or...
Expiration or something.
Expir, yeah.
My, you know, obviously, my concern is these business owners didn't even know they were paying the correct amount, they were classified incorrectly, or not even
Well, I...
I personally think that we should just...
Start fresh.
Yeah.
Start fresh. I was going to make a motion that we just...
And start, and then make sure it never happens again.
Right.
I make the motion just to forgive...
Me. All in first, say aye. Aye. Aye.
The next slide, we skip all the way to 11A, considering that mutual aid fire agreement with San Patricio County. This is just the standard shared service agreement that we have with our firefighting entities and others.
This is basic housekeeping here?
Basic housekeeping.
Okay. I just have one question. I noticed this was only for San Patricio. What about Aransas County and Raffirio County?
Well, I think the agenda item is listed as San Patricio, but if you look at the service agreements, it's...
Well, that's all in San Pat, though. I didn't see Rockford, Fulton, Lamar.
I'm not sure. I will find out about that and bring that forward.
I mean, if that's, my only concern is if that isn't a problem, if that's something that, because we mutuate with them so often, so we need to get that one taken care of also. There's an open agreement.
You want to get that before we approve this?
No, we can do this, but then we definitely need to get that one taken care of also. And Port Aransas also, so no issues, Ken?
Yeah, no issues.
Well, I make a motion we approve the mutual aid fire agreement with San Patricio County.
I second.
All in first, say aye. 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 This brings to item 14, Sylvia. City manager, please.
Well, Mayor, we do have a couple of items that were of interest. First of all, we don't want to ask about the annexation, just reminding the council about December 7th and December 14th, reminding council about the joint meeting with the school districts. We are working on time to not only accommodate the district, but some other items that will be on the council agenda, so the council meeting may be shifted to 6:00 PM to accommodate the school district at 7:00 PM.
Right.
But we will give appropriate notice once we can work out the schedule with both Shenier and School District.
A reminder to the school district?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I also wanted to give the council an update on the storm event that we had over the weekend. I sense we was keeping in contact with you guys. We did, we are doing a post-storm assessment, you know, three days prior to, we went out, we did our surveys, we did everything we needed to do. There are some areas that are needed, that we need improvement on, some of our pumps and do the appropriate planning. So you'll begin to start to see these kinds of debriefs, not just preparation debriefs, to at least let the citizens know where we stand. We did put out social media, we did push out reverse line 1-1. We did post everything anywhere that we could possibly get to get the word out, and we did not have as much infiltration, so I think that's at least beginning, folks are opening their clean out, so that's at least beginning to take root in people's minds not to do that. So that really, really helps our treatment plans and it helps folks downstream more even able to flush.
The current, Alan, the agreements for 2725 end in December 31st, so we cannot start annexation proceedings until those agreements are voided. So we'll start, we've already had one meeting with the 2725 property owners. That annexation will run, like, with, for sure with Forest Annexation, but it's going to run very quickly.
Any other question for council? No. And that's going to bring us to item 16, executive session at 7:33 PM. We're going to, city council will research to executive session, discuss the following items pursuant to Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, item 551.071, consultation with city attorney over harbor lease with Rich Palmetto, DBA Underwater Services Incorporated. Item 16B will be Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney over the harbor lease at, with Coast Point Company Incorporated. Appreciate everybody that came out this evening. Thank you all for making it. If you don't stay, and if you do stay, hopefully we won't be that long, we'll come back from our executive session. Yep, good evening, gentlemen. Thank you.
[inaudible]
I need to get my...
It's ready.
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 It's ready.